Good afternoon, no, good evening. Good evening Coral Gables. First, I want to thank everybody that came to this town hall, especially all the employees, city manager, assistant managers, Commissioner Menendez, people from the union. I mean, there is so many, so many people here. I'm sorry if I missed. I know Iggy Alvarez is here too. He's running for sheriff. Thank you for being here. He also lives here. He owns a business here. Very involved. Thank you, Rip. Today, we're going to be talking. Do you want to do any opening remarks, city manager?
No.
No? Okay, perfect. Today, we're going to be talking about the mileage rate and service reductions. I'm going to go into detail of what exactly is being reduced with dollars and cents. We're only going to be talking about the 2% reduction. The current mileage rate right now is 5.559. I don't know if you guys have been following the commission meetings, but on August 1st, we're going to have to make a vote. And the vote's going to be either to leave the mileage rate the same or to reduce it a 2% or a 3% with majority max vote, or there's going to be a rollback rate. How does that happen? To leave the current mileage the same, we're going to need a fourth, fifth vote. If we don't have a fourth, fifth vote, we cannot leave it the same. Two elected officials are proposing a 2% reduction in the mileage. For that to happen, you also need a fourth, fifth vote. There's a possibility of a three-fifth vote. That would be a 3% reduction, which would equal $3,247,000 in deficit. Or there's a rollback rate. What triggers the rollback rate? If we get up from there and we don't make a decision practically. Correct me if I'm wrong, Paula. Anything else? That would, no. If we get up from there and we say, no, we are not going to vote. There's no decision, that would trigger a rollback rate. And that would be $10,058,941. How much will a 2% reduction save you? The median homesteaded value? It would save you $61.23 per year or $1.18 weekly. I was going to have someone from finance in some corner. Paula, do you know who would be taking care of? No, okay. Nora, we're going to have someone. If you don't know how much of a deduction you're going to have, you could give her your information of your house and she'll tell you exactly how much you will be saving. At any point, where's Nora? Nora's all the way in the back. She's raising her hand. At any point, you can stand up and have a better idea of, in reality, with dollars and numbers, how much you're going to be able to save. The average homesteaded value savings is going to be $105 per year or $2.02 weekly. I believe a savings, doesn't matter how big, is always good. However, you have to do check and balances and see, does this savings really equal the benefit? Right? See what weighs more, I guess. The top commercial properties with a 2% reduction would be The Plaza at $36,500. The second would be Thesis Hotel at $11,328. Gables Columbus Center at $9,409. Merrick Park at $9,144. And the Colony Douglas at almost $9,000. So these are the people that would be really benefiting the most out of this 2% reduction. Paula has shown this slide before, but just in case you have missed it, this is how your tax money is divided. Coral Gables gets 30 cents of your dollar for the amount of taxes that you pay. One cent goes to regional. 37 cents of the dollar go to the school board and 32 cents go to the county. So from your whole tax amount, Coral Gables keeps 30 to be able to lead the city. So now, we're going to be talking about impact on Public Works, including solid waste and green space. I'm going to go over these numbers and then I'm going to invite Hermes. I'm going to invite Solid Waste. And I don't know if Dina, Dina Bell is here? She's on Zoom?
Good evening, I'm on Zoom.
Okay, perfect. If you want to chime in at any moment, please feel welcome to, okay? I want them to understand with these deductions, how that's affecting their department and how services would be affected in that sense. Reduction to operating account would be $166,841. Reduction for new needs is $238.57. There will be freezing positions of $304.86. The total reductions for that department are going to be $708,984. I wanted to give the understanding that when we do a budget, departments given a needless, a new needless list. And not everything of what that department needs to function is funded. Before even considering this 2% reduction, Public Works did not get funded $1,435 with 208. So that's something good to keep in mind that as it is, the department's not functioning with all the necessities that they need. So 2%, as little as it sounds, it's a big hit. Now, if I can have Hermes and Solid Waste. So the first one that I'm going to be touching base on is Solid Waste Garbage. She is the director. Here, let me give you a mic. Hello. I'm sorry, she's supervisor. Director?
Assistant.
Okay. Sorry.
Good evening, Sharon Grayson. I'm the Assistant Director for Solid Waste. With the freezing of the position for the solid waste crane operator, it's going to cause an increased workload. It's also going to cause delays in the trash, garbage and recycling pickup, as well as overtime for our employees. And it's going to decrease the employee morale. So this is a great impact. And we provide backdoor service for, you know, the city of the residents for garbage, trash and recycling.
Okay. So some of the things that I had gathered was, over the past two weeks, 12 employees have been out, leading to delay in routes. So if there's been any delays, now you know why. And you've witnessed them, even though I know this department does the most wonderful job so that we, the residents, don't realize what's happening in the background. I know that she has some summer challenges. Typically, two to three additional solid waste workers are employed during the summer. However, usually, four to five employees suffer from heat exhaustion. And obviously, we have staffing issues because of that. And we're already freezing positions. Their new needs list has not been funded. I believe that they've had the same employees for, what, 10 years? Without an increase? It was 10 years? Roughly? Right. So this new needs list was very important. I don't remember how much was it that you guys didn't get funded? Like a million five, they didn't get funded. That's something good to keep in mind. Trash pit, understaffing, lease increase, overtime. So if we're not hiring someone, but we're paying overtime, we're shooting ourselves on the foot, aren't we? That's something that as administration, we want to avoid if we need to hire a new person instead of paying time and a half, I don't know how many more hours for every employee. Do you want to talk about heat exhaustion? How many rounds your solid waste workers are doing? IVs that have to be put on?
So currently, right now, we've experienced four to five heat exhaustion with the sanitation workers. These are your employees that provide your backdoor service, who actually comes in your backyard to remove your trash. So with it being very hot outside, if they don't have enough water intake, it can cause them heat exhaustion. And when they have heat exhaustion, they usually pass out or they're very severely hydrated. And multiple times, we've had to call a rescue to our site to give them IVs to get them hydrated. So when we're short staffed, it puts more work on the workers that we have. So that's what we experience. And when heat is auctioned and we're still not finished with the summer.
Thank you so much. I really appreciate that. Let me see. Okay, now, I want to go ahead and touch base on the backdoor service. Okay, let's talk about the solid waste garbage fee reduction. The current absorption before we gave the extra discount was $4 million. Correct me if I'm wrong, please. Because I did this presentation myself. There could be errors. Additional absorption due to new discount was $3.9 million and with a total number of 7.9. No? Hello, hello, hello? No? Take it over there then. Okay. Okay. With the discount that we gave for garbage, and I just, I want to make a comparison so that we can get the idea of there's different methods to give you a break than to lower the mileage rate. For example, the garbage discount. For the early payment reduction, the reduction was $254. That's equivalent to reducing the mileage by 8.30%. And for the regular payment reduction, that was $360. That's equivalent to 11.76%. In the commission, I know we can brainstorm as brainstorm in sunshine to be able to do these things. But a mileage reduction is a reduction that happens year after year after year. And that's detrimental. These are things that without the 2% are still not budgeted for. And we still haven't fixed. I'm just giving you examples. It's not like we have a lot of fat and we're not deciding everything. We have a tight budget. And everything needs to get budgeted for. And there's things that when you drive around town, you find that are not fixed. It's not because we don't notice them. It's because there's certain monies allocated for certain things at a timeline. Obviously, a 2% reduction or whichever reduction will affect timely how things are repaired or fixed. And I know Hermes, can you touch base on that a little more? Here.
I'll do that, yes.
How is this going to affect your department?
Good evening, everyone. So for the general polyworts department, there's a combination of cuts that are currently being proposed. And it's a combination of smaller accounts that together amount to some printing, copying, things of that nature that are used for public meetings like this one. Professional services that are used for general things that come at the last minute that require consulting to be hired. And maybe it wasn't originally budgeted through the project, through a project. Equipment maintenance for our rideaway, a maintenance team. Materials for the sign shop. The sign shop folks are the ones that, you know, we have about 12,000 signs around the city and about 2,500 monuments. So they're the guys who clean up the monuments, maintain the signs. Maintenance and replacement of equipment and tools for green space and solid waste. Some funds for employee training. There's also a freezing of a position for, a part-time position for the sign shop. And...
What does that signify? Is there a position frozen?
It's our ability to maintain. You know, the signs get dirty. They get stickers, graffiti, et cetera. That's what these guys do. They maintain the monuments on the streets. They get moldy. Sometimes they need to be cleaned up. They need to be painted. So that's what they do. There's also proposed freezing of several automotive positions. You know, there's a nationwide shortage of mechanics. And we struggle hiring a full staff of mechanics. And what we've been doing over the last, at least two years, maybe a little longer, is use the salary savings from the overtime or the salary savings from those positions to pay overtime through our current employees so that we can maintain the fleet. So we have, there's three automotive positions that are being proposed to be frozen. And in addition to some additional requests that we really thought will be approved, but now it may not happen, including an additional position for the sign shop, the potential for a contract to maintain a street monuments rather than be reactive, but on a regular basis. The idea would be like every five or six years, all the monuments in the city will be redone, things of that nature. And I think for the rest, I'll let Dina talk about landscaping if that's the next...
And potholes and sidewalk?
So that's part of the rideaway repair and maintenance equipment repairs. That will be impacted. Yeah, the rideaway folks are the ones who address sidewalk grinding, potholes, seaweed. If we have any issue with seaweed on the waterways. So that will affect that team.
Beautiful.
All right.
Guys, thank you so much. Okay, so now, we're going to talk about IT. There we go, Raymundo. Did we get the other microphone to work? Yeah?
Hello? Hello?
I'm so sorry. You know what? I'm going to go back. Dina, I forgot you on Zoom.
Yes, Commissioner, good evening. Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I could hear you.
Okay, I'm calling in from the State Landscape Architects Conference in Orlando. So thanks for letting me dial in.
Absolutely.
So landscape architects, green space management cuts, equipment and tools. We won't be replacing our electric batteries and other small equipment as often. We'll be relying on gas blowers if the electric batteries for our electric blowers go out because they're quite pricey to replace in our fleet. Also, we will be eliminating the black olive treatment program. We will no longer be treating black olives for staining. We will not be putting the insecticides in 2,000 of those trees per year. Agricultural supplies with a significant cut to our ability to purchase plant materials, fertilizers, pesticides and herbicides. It's going to significantly impact our ability to replace damaged landscaping. And we're going to be not putting the pretty flowers that everyone's liking. We're going to be using more native plants that are green and require less maintenance in our downtown areas. Also, we have a proposal of landscaping at traffic circles, which is a new needs that we've asked for. We have a lot of traffic accidents that damage our plants. We won't be able to purchase them and replace them as quickly as we do now. And we have two green space maintenance workers proposing freezing two of our positions. This will be visible in our downtown areas. We're not going to be replacing plants, fixing broken irrigation or upgrading the landscaping in our downtown areas so quickly if we have two less workers working in downtown. Thank you.
Thank you, Dina, for coming in through Zoom. I really appreciate it. Okay, now, we're going to go on to IT. The impact of IT with this reduction. Reduction to operating accounts is 206,000. Freezing positions would be 85,000. And total reductions would be almost 300,000. Please come up. Okay. Now, please tell us how this is going to affect your department.
Good evening, Commissioners. So we are impacting four IT accounts. So we are reducing $110,000 in professional services, $76,000 in hardware professional services for support and repairs, $8,000 reduction in IT training and $13,000 in printer maintenance and operations. And we are freezing one IT position. And the impact is as follows. So basically, those professional services, those hardware repairs services, they help us with specific incidents or to install new equipment or to install wiring, cabling and maintain systems for cybersecurity, systems for police safety, for police and fire, for citywide services that we support. If we cut those services, so we have to overextend our staff that is already really working nights and weekends supporting citywide services. So if you count all the hardware devices that we support outside in buildings and on city employees, it's almost 3,000 devices that we support. And applications, almost 200 applications that we support citywide. And so that implies that we have to overextend that staff that is already doing overtime and working nights and during weekends. So that's the impact on employee morale. So the exhaustion that can come out of overworking staff that is already taking care of complex operations citywide. And the position we are freezing is important because it's a position to take care of all the police mobile fleet.
Oh, boy.
So today, we have a part-time technician taking care of more than 200 mobile fleet devices for police. And now, we have to replace them all. We have to upgrade them to new models. So it's a lot of work that is coming up in the next months. And we just went live with a new police fire and 911 system. It's a CAT and RMS system that we just deployed. So we have also to support the transition to the new system and the operation. So it's an important position that we already advertised. We already got the resumes and we were ready to start the interview process. So that is...
And that's the one that's going to be frozen, right? Perfect. Can I give you a microphone? Because there's people on Zoom. I believe there's like 50 people on Zoom right now. And welcome. I'm sorry I didn't see you.
Well, sorry I couldn't be here earlier, but I had another meeting to go to. And this was not cleared on my calendar. So therefore, I had to attend that meeting first and then come in here. So just request in the future that if you're going to schedule a meeting, please circulate dates with the full commission so that we can adjust our calendars accordingly. I'd appreciate that. So my question to you, Ramondo, is have you evaluated this under anything less than a 2% cut? You had only evaluated it based on your presentation at a 2% cut level. Have you looked at it a 1% cut level?
Yes, we look at the scenarios during the budget, the four scenarios, the 100%, 99, 98 and 97. These 200 reduction corresponds to our 97%. So it's actually a 3% reduction on IT. And those cuts that I showed are related to that 97% scenario. We also have the scenario for 98, which is a little bit less. So those four accounts, instead of coding 110,000, we are coding kind of like $90,000 or $80,000. So they go gradually for the different scenarios. So we do have the impact on the other cases.
That assumes that any cuts are made in your department as opposed to other departments where the necessity of the services like police and fire and IT are critical services, correct?
Yes, we, a big part of what we do is supporting police safety. So police and fire are part of our main internal customers for all of these services. Professional services impact police safety too because they are for systems that support 911 and EOC and police safety.
So that would be a vital service. Go ahead.
Thank you very much, Rhonda. Vice Mayor Anderson. Thank you so much. Impact. The next slide we're going to be talking about is impact on community recreation. Okay. There we go. Reduction to operating accounts is going to be 80,696. Reduction for new needs is 215,000. Freezing positions is 126, almost 127. And total reductions for community recreations is 422,602. The new needs not funded before consideration of the 2% reduction were $1,368 with $600. If you can go ahead and tell us exactly how this is going to affect the community. I know that some people, they want to know, is this going to affect pickleball directly or indirectly?
So I'll answer that one quickly. The only thing that we would look to that might be affected is, currently, right now, we had a pilot program out for Sunday where we have a staff member out there Sunday. It wasn't budgeted for this year. We were doing it as a pilot to see how it works. And we've been very fortunate that I've had staff that has been doing it for compensatory time and not for pay. But there is no guarantee that I'll be able to continue that it's based on having employees volunteer for it. Then we'd have to find the staffing cost for that. So that wasn't budgeted to begin with, so that's not part of the cut. So I want to make sure that we look at it. But it is something that would be a difficulty. In terms of the impacts of our reductions, we tried to look at things that didn't necessarily eliminate things, but there are definite reductions in some of the services we do. Examples would be for our summer camps. We do two field trips for the kids a week. We looked at having only one field trip a week. That eliminates the cost of sending hundreds of kids to a bowling alley, plus all the buses. So that's how we looked at some of those reductions. We're looking at, you know, the uniforms that we give, both to staff and for athletics, you know, looking at different materials and having reduction in that. I did recall, I heard Dina mention stuff about the electrical. That's the same thing for our maintenance, the batteries for our electric blowers and things. We'd have to look at, maybe going back to gas, supplies such as our dog waste bags. We do quite a few bags, probably about $35,000 in bags, looking at reducing some of that percentage, which means we'll fill those dog waste stations with bags a little more intermittently than we do now. In terms of the, we have some events that we have, and we're looking at reducing some of the things that we do in the events, things that we have to pay money for when we have like a climbing wall or we bring in a petting zoo or we bring in, you know, a hay maze or things like that. So we'd have to cut some of that stuff in each prospective event. And then, we also have a barbecue bike ride, which we would look at maybe eliminating at this point. That would be the one that we would look at eliminating within these cuts. The new needs that were mentioned, one of the big new needs that we were looking at that was going to be funded in this budget estimate was increasing the janitorial services at a lot of our facilities. We have a couple of, we have a janitorial contractor that comes in and in certain places, they come maybe once or maybe in the morning and then late at night. And we got a lot of requests from our users to clean the bathrooms a lot more often, to have periodically at all of our different facilities, whether it's Venetian Pool, our tennis centers. So we would look at, that was something that we asked for and that's a big cut. And another, some of the other new need fundings are things that, our holiday park. We're at the end of that contract. We're able to work with our vendor to get an extension. But to do a new holiday park, eventually, the cost, you know, the prices that we have now were down about seven or eight years ago. So what we've seen from vendors is that's going to cost a substantial amount of money to bring in a new holiday park, which is a new house and all that stuff. So we're getting to the end of life of that one. And we're, right now, what we're going to do is we're going to bring it back and refurbish it and renovate it. But eventually, we'll have to go down that route. And then, the two frozen positions for us are a maintenance worker at Venetian Pool. Very important for us. They're the one maintenance worker that's at Venetian Pool. That position is vacant. It's been frozen, so we can't fill that position. And the youth center foreman, we have, we have a crew of three that maintains the facility and grounds at the youth center. And the foreman position is vacant, so we would not be able to fill that one as well.
So what happens when we freeze a maintenance position like in the Venetian Pool?
So maintenance takes a hit and we have to use our other staff, you know, parks crew guys. We have to pull people off other assignments in order to maintain at least the minimum standard of, you know, having something that's not overgrown. Venetian Pool is a little bit more of a technical position as well because there's got to be daily pump work there and they got to work on, you know, the drain and fills there. So there's a little bit more that's into it. So yeah, we'd have to take from other locations and that would decrease the maintenance at parks or other facilities.
Thank you very much. Thank you. The next slide we're going to be looking into is development, impact on development services. The reduction... The reduction, Douglas, if you could start coming up, thank you so much. Reduction to operating accounts would be 53,455. Reduction for new needs would be 149,458. Freezing positions would equal to $219,066. The total reductions would be 421,979. And the new needs not funded but for consideration of the 2% would be almost $90,000. Okay. I'll go ahead and touch base on this, and I know you're going to have much more to add. Freezing the, we're going to be freezing the developmental director position for an additional six months. It has already been vacant for nine months. Freezing an administrative assistant position, this position supports delays and 65 employees, including the director and deputy. It recently became vacant. Code field supervisor and code officer positions, these positions will not be funded. Consensus was that code needed more support and staffing. One field supervisor cannot cover both day and night shifts. If you could go ahead and elaborate, you are the specialist in your, in your department, the expert.
I'll be happy to do so. So in, in the order that you covered it, the freezing of the vacant positions, as you mentioned, the development service director could be frozen for another six months. The city's been without one for 11 months already. It's been taxing on the city manager's office, on the other directors, on the staff themselves in the department to try and cover the, the vacancy. We don't think that it's going to be sustainable in the long term to continue to have that arrangement. We also, the freezing of an administrative assistant position that we have at development services, this is a position that was previously filled, and we were about to interview replacements when the word came that we might be freezing it. This is taxing the other administrative assistants in the department, the, the admin analysts as well, and they stepped up because we had that person vacate the position, but we still have the work that still needs to be done. So this affects us internally as well.
So yeah, so what effect does it have on services by freezing these positions?
Okay, well, these, these positions, the, the services that are affected are, well, for the development service director, obviously that affects our ability to help the public. There's half of us available to be able to attend special circumstances and to assist people. Then the administrative assistant also helps the directors to basically keep up with the load that external people might be bringing in the door. But in, in, in addition to the freezing of those positions, I wanted to talk about the, the reduction of services that development services will be providing the public, right? So the, one of the biggest chunks of, of money would be cut from some of the things that we rely on to help the community, such as removal of peacocks, such as when you have overgrown lots and then the, people are laughing. When, when you have overgrown lots and then the code enforcement has to call a vendor to come out and clean the lot when you have a pool that has not been maintained, and code enforcement has to call a vendor to come out and clean that pool so that it doesn't create mosquitoes and an unhealthy situation in your neighborhood. It could be your neighbor behind you or next to you. So we would have to cut the biggest chunk from there. Getting back to the vice mayor's question earlier, similar to what Remundo mentioned in his case, depending on if you go with the 3% or the 2% or the 1%, that's just how deep we're going to cut into these funds, right? Like, it's, obviously, we can receive more clear direction later, but that's the way we foresee it. We, we kind of took the funds and, and we divided it by three, by two, and by one to, to figure out how much we're going to cut into these things on development services. So let me see, is there any other? Okay, one of the other things is that we have consultants for, they kind of pick up the load when the workload increases. We have consultants that pick up the load when somebody goes on vacation. And then this cut will also affect the, the consultants and how you, how much money we have available for them. So indirectly, it affects the resident because now our turnaround times are going to become longer in a lot of cases where, you know, we normally, as like Remundo also said earlier, we're, we're, we're pretty thin, like, we don't have a lot of fat to cut. When people go on vacation, we could feel the reduced bandwidth in the team, things take longer. And, and a lot of times, we try to cover it, but some people have to wait longer when there's no one else to cover that position. So these consultants help us during those ebbs and flows of the work, when people are out, or when all of a sudden, everybody just runs in there trying to build something at the same time, and, and then we just don't have enough staff, the consultants help us pick up that difference. If we have to cut into that, then we don't have a consultant, and the community might feel it more because it's going to take us longer to get back to you or to get it, to get it done the way you would like it done, or we'll have less people available, so you have to wait longer to see somebody, that sort of thing can happen. Okay, and then I want to also to talk about the, the cutting of the new needs. So development services had new needs that we were going to have if, if there are no cuts, we were going to have a new code enforcement field supervisor to supplement the one that we already have, and another code enforcement officer to supplement the code enforcement officers we already have. There's been an increasing need for code enforcement throughout the city, and we, we wanted these positions to be able to enhance our ability to have night shifts, shifts on the weekends. And we're doing it now with the staff that we have, but in order to do that, we have to kind of take people off of the day shifts or the weekday shifts and put them on the weekend. And then we're basically taking it from here and putting it in there, but we're not really enhancing the coverage. We, we would prefer having, you know, the full coverage throughout the week and then enhanced coverage on the weekend, day and night shifts. And if this happens, then it's going to be frozen and we won't, well, they're going to cut those new needs, we're not going to get them, I'm sorry. And the, the code enforcement field supervisor is, is also a challenge because we, we only have one right now. But we do have early shift, and we have late shift, and we have weekend shifts. And obviously, you can't have a supervisor there from very early in the day to very late in the day, Monday through Friday, and then also on Saturday and Sunday, it's just not feasible. So we, we, we put in this new need for a new field supervisor to supplement the other one that we have so that this work can be divided more evenly, and we will have a, a better supervision of the amount of officers that we have also, because there is a high ratio of officers to supervisor.
Beautiful. Thank you so much, Douglas, that was very explicit.
You're welcome.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so the next slide we're going to be looking into is human resources. Raquel? No? Okay, I thought I saw her. No?
The president.
Oh, I thought I saw her now, I guess I didn't. No, okay.
Hello, everyone, I'm the Assistant HR Director, Jose Rodriguez.
Okay, so the reduction to operating accounts would be 19,600, and freezing positions would be 82,255, and total reductions would be 101,913. I'm going to go ahead and touch base on this, this is what Raquel told me, but please feel free to add a lot more or whatever you think is appropriate.
The one is a 2%?
This is a 2%. It's everything's a 2% because that's the only thing that was proposed in front of me in, in, in the commission room.
No, if there's another narrative presented to you, direct, lower percentage.
Okay. Right, no, because what was presented to me within the elected officials was a 2% and all these numbers are based only on a 2%, not a 3%.
No, I'm talking about the lower percentage. You have to look at that, you have to.
No, I didn't, because this was what was proposed, a 2%. Okay. HR business analyst position?
Sorry, there's some conversation going on, and I don't know what you're saying, so what about this back?
She needs a microphone.
My point is to make the public aware that there were additional percentages presented. You had a 2%, you had a 1%, and you had other percentages presented at individual meetings.
That, that's inaccurate, I'm sorry.
Well.
You guys had a 3%. It's a two percent.
That wasn't what was presented.
If you're talking about what was discussed in, in the commission chambers as opposed to what the city manager's office presented to you, then, then I think it's disingenuous to the public to tell them that lower percentages were not presented to you. Okay? Because I saw lower percentages, you saw lower percentages, and this was just a 2% that was discussed, that was moved forward so we could look at numbers. If you don't look at the numbers, you can't make a decision.
What was presented was the 2%, that was what was in debate during the commission meeting. Any other thing is behind doors, that's not what I'm going to present to you. Or with her in particular, who knows? I'm sorry for, I'm sorry for interrupting. HR business analyst position, that's going to be frozen, this position's responsible for auditing and full implementation of INFOR. INFOR is the accounting that has to do everything with payroll and benefits, including auditing of employee records, benefits, and pay is being frozen. The HR business analyst is envisioned to go, as the go-to person for these tasks. Trainings, reduced funding will impact availability and scope of employee training and programs. And I, Raquel also spoke to me about ADA funding, okay? There will be no additional funds allocated to the ADA fund affecting compliance and accommodation of initiatives. Can you elaborate on this and add whatever you feel is necessary?
I'll start with the HR business analyst. So we switched over to a new ERP system, so a new accounting system, payroll, payroll system. How about now?
Yeah.
All right, there we go. So we switched over to a new system called INFOR. INFOR is a new system where it's a timekeeping, payroll, accounting, budgeting system. So with that came a lot of changes. We came from a system that was almost 20 years old, we've updated it. And that HR analyst, the, the goal of that person, that position, was to help us maximize our efficiency. So right now, we're, we're, we're getting through it, we have payroll, we have different processes that we're working, but there's a lot of functions that that position can help us maximize. That system is a new cloud-based system, it's a brand-new system, there's so many features, reports, that I know we're not maximizing. So that person was supposed to be hired to do those things to maximize the efficiency of, of our department. So that's one of the, the, the one position that will be frozen, so it's, it will hurt us in the, in the ways that we can maximize the system. So for the auditing, catching mistakes, fixing things, keeping up, things like that. The training, the HR department manages the training funds for the entire city. So every department has a small training budget that they have for certification, so engineering certificates, things like that. But citywide, just general trainings comes out of the HR department, so that would reduce our ability to provide training to our employees. So, you know, that has trickle-down effects, the different trainings we offer, we offer a variety of trainings, management training, customer service training, that we won't be able to offer as many trainings to our employees i- if our budget's reduced there. And the last thing is the ADA fund. Raquel, my, my boss, her, the director is in charge of making sure that our buildings are ADA compliant, so she works for a lot of departments, public works, public services to ensure that the buildings within the city are ADA compliant. So that fund allows us to make those changes, whether it be little sidewalks, stairs, whatever it may be, to make sure that we're up to the ADA code. So obviously, less funding there would limit our ability to make those repairs.
Perfect. Is there anything else you want to touch base on?
I think that's it, thank you.
Then thank you so much, Jose. Okay, the next thing we're going to be talking about is our beautiful and most loved police and fire. It has been said that police and fire are not being touched. And in actuality, there is not a number that is going to be reduced for them, but I would love, well, let me go ahead and change the slide. Okay. Okay. I would love to touch base first on the new needs that were, were not funded. For police, it was 723,000, and for fire was 82,000 for this year. Indirect effects of budget cuts. And before I go through this, I'll go ahead and call up Chief Jurak and De La Rosa. I know that they'll provide some insight to how their departments will be affected with these cuts, even though you're not seeing the numbers, because certain elected officials requested that we don't touch public safety. Thank you for being here. Okay, so I'll go ahead and operational necessities, and then I'll move to, to the next slide, and then you guys can just talk, so I can move to the next slide. Operational necessities, police cars and fire trucks need to be running and well-maintained. IT infrastructure, including computers and communication systems, must remain functional. Okay, then, go ahead. Say whatever you want to say.
I mean, we can, we can expound on, on the first part of the first two is, you know, all of the commissioners have committed and, and we have not been told in the budget process that our departments, both sworn and civilian, and the police department, were going to be affected by this, by this proposal. The unintended issues or, or the secondary issues that we've touched on in this is, you know, the police department is probably the biggest internal customer to the IT department. Every one of your police officers has their own laptop. It is essential that that works 24/7 whenever the officer is there. That laptop, which handles all of our reports, our investigations, it coordinates everything from where the officers are actually at to where the detectives will see it the next day on their computers. The second part of the thing that we always keep an eye on is our vehicles. Now, right now, we are, because of our, our vacancies right now, we do have cars if we have to go to them, but those are on a contractual lifespan. So unlike, like your cars, I mean, these could be going for 14, 15, 18 hours a day and then turned down for a little bit and then brought back up. So our, our life of the vehicles is also something that we have to keep an eye on. The downtime of those, and if you think about it as I do for the officers, every police officer has their own office, that's their car, it's set up, they take it home, they, they come to work, and they have set it up, though, when their office is down or if it's in the shop and that gets backed up, that's a, that's a problem for that. And we have a very stringent amount of times that it has to be checked, it has, we call it PMs or preventive maintenancees. And other, other vacancies throughout the city is something that would slow that down now. Does that slow down officers on the street? No, it does not. You know, we are currently, with our allotted budget monies and the vacancies that we have, we are able to staff, so it is not going to affect the staffing and on the streets of the police department or of the city, excuse me. All of the other, and as you saw earlier, our list that we put through with the manager's office is something that we know is going to be needed in the next two to three years, and something that is needed now. And all it does is not only enhance life, safety issues, but also helps us solve crimes much faster. That's some of the technology stuff, which ties into our IT department. There, there's a reason why in this building that the IT department is put in here to protect the infrastructure of the city, but it's also, we are their biggest internal customer with that many people working it that way. So those are some of the things that we kind of keep an eye on when it comes to our budgeting side of something that we can or cannot do, or services that we may provide on a myriad of different things, whether it be marine patrol, the boats coming out of the water, you know, the things like that, that's, goes into the maintenance side of it and on the confused.
Code enforcement. Can you touch base on code enforcement?
Well, the code enforcement side, so with the code enforcement hours of what they work, when it is not, when they are not on duty, a police officer or two do respond. And by not having them address that issue right away, we are writing a police report, we are forwarding that to code enforcement to be followed up. What that does is it slows down the reaction to the, to the violator and the city's ability to do that, because it does take a day or two to get that done. If anything comes up in a code enforcement board, that officer now does have to appear, in fact, in front of the code enforcement to testify what they saw at night. So the code enforcement issues also present a delay, I would say, and a final disposition, if you will, of any other kind of code enforcement complaint that comes on. And that's, you know, the other thing is our, our communication center, when everybody goes home, and I mean, everybody goes home, there's, there's a bunch of men and women in this building that answer your phones 24/7, not just the 911 calls, not just the police department calls, but if you call the main number, it's going to get routed to us and, and those men and women upstairs. So again, all of that has to stay kind of, if there's, if there's a, a gap in that circle, then it's going to be felt by us, but it's not going to impact the services that we have for us.
Okay.
I don't know if you were taking questions.
Okay, I'm going to take questions at the end, but is it specifically to, to, to the chief, the question you have? Okay, I'll go ahead and take you, but I'm going to take questions at the end. Give me a second. Do we have an extra microphone? Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you for being here, chief. I was, I don't have my glasses, so I can't really read too well, but I wanted to know, it says there are 38 police vacancies. Do we need 38 police officers?
So they recommend.
The budget set aside, is there money set aside for 38 police officers?
There is money set aside. So about a year and a half, I'm sorry, probably almost two years now, I think it was, myself and the fire chief gave a presentation, and the anticipation of the vertical growth of the city and the response time effectiveness that we would have for the police department is we needed an additional 15 bodies over three years. That has been in the funding throughout. We're in the third stage or the third year of that with this upcoming budget, which would have been another five positions. Those positions were never actually filled, so those do count toward the 38 vacancies. So.
Why aren't they being filled?
Well, we're recruiting. I mean.
But how long has there been vacancies?
How long has there been vacancies? I think we were at zero vacancies for about two months in June of 2023. Right now, there is a national recruiting search, if you will, for police officers. People don't want to be in this job.
I understand, but then in one year, there have been 38 police vacancies?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your question. Okay. And Fire Chief De La Rosa, if you can please.
So just to add to what Chief Hurdak said, a lot of the presentations, fire department staffing is committed to continue, so it's not like we're going to see a reduction in staffing in the fire department. However, a lot of the positions that were mentioned here as potential cuts were or indirectly impact the fire department. So as Chief Hurdak alluded to, we're highly dependent on IT department, not only just because of the computers that we have on our trucks and also our EOC. Plus, the city is in the process of implementing, I believe, like almost three or four different enterprise programs which affect the entire city, one of them being the 911 CAD Center, the other one being the damage assessment software that we would be using during a hurricane. So all of that falls on the support of IT to implement and to manage that for us. The same with the shortage and the challenge that we have with recruiting and retaining mechanics. Our fleet needs constant maintenance and support to run. On top of that, we are faced with the challenge of supply chain issues when it comes to parts and anything that we need to replace on those trucks. So our downtime sometimes indirectly is affected by that supply chain. So those mechanics and staying on the timely response to our vehicles is critical. So those indirect impacts to the budget will have an impact on us.
Thank you so much, Chief De La Rosa. Our next slide is going to be economic development. The reduction to economic development in operating accounts is 20,500. Reduction for new needs was 300,000. Freezing positions, 96,981, and total reductions, 417,522. The new needs not funded before the 2% consideration was 316,109. If I can have Belkis. And she's doing the best she could with the money she has, so thank you.
All right, good afternoon. One, two, three? One, two, three? Okay. All right. So good evening, everyone. Belkis Perez, Economic Development. I just want to give you, can you hear? No? Good evening, everyone. I just want to give you just a little bit of background. Economic development does help our downtown community and our commercial districts everywhere in the city. The goal is to have a really resilient downtown and business base in the city, so you as residents don't have to leave the city to conduct your business as well. So as a result, we did, we looked at three accounts that we had, and as a result, we cut in the, we do workshops for our brokers in order to make sure that they have the information necessary. They are ambassadors to the city. They go out and look for businesses that meet the criteria to be in the city and that have the right customer base for the city. And so we reduce the amount of workshops in that sense. We also cut some events as well. The events like Halloween on the Mile, which is very popular, might be reduced in size as a result of this. And we also had other workshops that we do for our merchants that help them to scale if they want and stay in the city. The other reduction, the new needs, was for a 300,000, which was for holiday decorations in the downtown to make them just, you know, more enhanced. And that, and then we have a position that is frozen. It is Business Community Development Manager, and that position oversees really the downtown to make sure we have the right retail mix, we have a retail strategy in place, and so they oversee a lot of the projects that have to do with bringing the right retail into the downtown.
Thank you. Thank you so much, Belkis. The next slide, the next slide, we will be talking about the impact on finance. So Paula, I know Diana is not in here, so if you could come up and cover for her. Reduction to operating accounts is 5,714. Freezing positions is 82,200, and total reductions is 88,000 practically. How would this affect your department, and if you can elaborate a little more?
Certainly. And so for the finance department, we house our, we have our accounting and reporting division, our budget division, and our collections division. And so the reduction to the operating accounts essentially would be reductions to our memberships and dues and our training of our employees, and so we would have to limit our trainings to just those employees that have required certifications, like CPAs, such as our finance director, who's required to have our CPA. There's also a reduction in some of our supplies accounts, and so as a finance department, we don't have a big operating budget because we don't provide services in that manner to the residents, but it takes away any flexibility that we have to address any things that come up in the year, such as mailings that might need to be done to our residents to notify them. So one of the big things that we do is we bill for our business tax receipts. We send out the solid waste notices each year, and so things like that might be impacted just from reducing the flexibility that we have in our operating budget. As you can see, $5,000 is not a lot, but that represents 3% of our operating budget, so that tells you how small our actual budget is. So freezing of positions, so similar to HR, we have a position that is intended to assist with the implementation and the maintenance of our new enterprise system, and so that enterprise system manages all of our finance functions as well as our HR functions, and so it manages our payroll system, our billing system, even our budgeting. And the position that we would be freezing is intended to help us not only to enhance the ability of us to use that system, but also to audit, to make sure that things and calculations are set up correctly in the system, and to support our staff. Currently, a small number of staff, including myself and the director, are handling technical items within that system, and so that position is intended to support that and to relieve staff to be able to do other functions within their positions. And so that would be the total reduction to finance.
Yes, but you need a microphone.
So I just want to understand something. Since you're finance and you know where the numbers are, and basically, the most amount that we spend in money in the city of Coral Gables is for services to the residents, because that's why we live here, one of the big reasons we live here. So the $10 million windfall that we get this year from the assessment of the property appraiser, that $10 million is broken down into $6.2 million of non-homesteaded residential, non-homesteaded residential and commercial properties, 1.3 million of others, and 2.6 million of homesteaded properties, which are protected by the Save Our Homes Act of the 3%, a 3% maximum every year. Based on that, it seems to me that the people that are getting a really good ride on this one, not the residents that are going to lose the most of services, but the people that have commercial buildings, the people that have non-homesteaded residential, both condos and single-family. So it seems to me that not taking advantage of the $10 million surplus and squirreling it away and doing things with that to provide better services for places like Ponce de Leon on the north side, where you can't even see the line on the streets for years, potholes in the city, and also other needs that we have. So it seems to me that it's disproportionate, and please correct me if I'm wrong, that as far as the $10 million amount of this surplus really comes down to the fact that the people that require the most amount of services are the ones that are going to suffer the most.
Thank you so much, Felix.
Is that correct?
Oh, she doesn't have a microphone.
Yes, so just to make sure that I state it for, you know, for the general public. So yes, so what you're referring to, what the gentleman is referring to, is that the increase in property values based on the current millage rate is going to generate $10 million more in property tax revenue to the city. And so while that is not a surplus for us, it is built into the budget estimate that we proposed, and reducing the millage would reduce that $10 million property tax revenue to the city. And so the 2% scenario would reduce that $10 million revenue by $2 million, 2.6 million. And so in one of the charts that was in our presentation, and I believe that's where he's gathering the information from, we presented the property types and how each property type contributes to that revenue increase. And so the homesteaded residential properties represents about 2.6 million, just under $3 million, of that $10 million increase, while all other properties represent the difference, which include commercial, multifamily, and other property types. And so, yes, reducing the millage and reducing our property taxes then in turn would become a reduction in our budget. And so if you are saying that homesteaded property owners reap the benefit of services and those things that are funded in our budget, then by not funding certain things in our budget, then homesteaded residential homeowners would feel the impact of any reduction to that.
What he said was that he thinks the word is suffer for the people that are in Zoom. Felix, you're completely correct. Thank you for your question. Yeah, we have somebody else that wanted, let me go ahead and take this question, too. Yeah? But with the microphone, because there's a lot of people on Zoom hearing. She's about to give it to you. A little patience.
Hi. So I wanted to ask the finance director, can you hear me? I wanted to ask the finance director. What, this may be a stupid question, but why is it that when you prepare the budget, you automatically incorporate into that budget the increased revenue from property values increase? I mean, it seems like it's an incentive to spend more.
So I'm going to repeat the question just to make sure that I got it correctly. I'm on a game show. No, how are you? So your question was that why do we build in the increase to property values?
Yes, automatically.
So.
More money to spend.
Right, so we actually don't. So the way that we start off our budget process each year is that we actually have departments submit to us their base budget. Their base budget is the same budget as last year. We don't give departments the option to submit to us an increased budget. They provide, they submit to us 100% budget. We allow them to move monies around within accounts, so they may tell us, well, we're printing less, but we're spending more on flash drives. I don't know. And so they can, they're allowed to move money within their existing accounts, but their budget remains the same when they submit it to the budget office and the budget process. The only thing that increases, I'm going to say automatically, is the budget office makes adjustments to salaries because we know that we have built-in increases for our negotiated contracts and our merits to employees. The next step, and this is where the, any additional revenue that we get is taken into account, the next step is that departments submit to us two types of requests. They submit to us a request for new funding needs, and so those requests include increases to electricity. They include increases to contracts, so our janitorial service may be anticipated to increase. Those are submitted to the budget office as requests. They are not built into the base budget that they submit to us. They may also have increase in new programming, enhancements to janitorial at facilities, putting on a new event, something along that lines. Then they also submit to us requests for capital projects, and so I think you're all involved, so you've probably seen our capital projects discussions, and all of those are submitted as requests. Any new funding is requested. Once we receive those requests, we start to discuss those with the city manager's office, the deputy city manager, the city manager, the ACM. We review and evaluate each one of the requests. We discuss them with the departments, and then once we know the revenue that we're anticipated to receive, then we sit down and really start crunching the numbers. And so at that point, then, we start to really evaluate what we can afford to fund and what is a priority to fund. And so we do not automatically build in the increased revenue. We evaluate what we can fund once we know how much revenue we're going to get. We typically have a small amount of contingency, but any money that's left over from our operating, we typically put that into capital projects, and we fund as much capital projects as possible.
I mean, I'm not in your shoes, but I mean, I think it's a wonderful opportunity to take that money and give it back to the, you know, the taxpayers. And not at 2%.
Thank you. Microphone.
One of the things that we also do when we do our budget process, we also ask the departments to go back and look at and do a reduction of 1%, 2%, and 3%, just in planning for the future of any reductions to our revenues, so.
I have very little slides left, and then we'll take all the questions. There's a lot of people on Zoom waiting for questions as well. I'll get back to the questions. We have not that much left, actually. We'll go back to finance. This is very important. Impact on city clerk. The reduction to operating accounts is 3,272. This is just going to reduce the training. It's three years to become a certified municipal clerk. That's the only thing that we're going to be doing with the city clerk, so I won't even call up Billy. Impact on non-departmental, can barely see what it says. Okay, Coral Gables Centennial and Drone Fireworks. Who could, Paula? Yeah. Reduction to operating accounts, 16,935. Reduction for new needs, 100,000, and total reductions, 117,000.
So nondepartamental is a division of our budget that houses expenses that are not specific to one department. And so in that. And so, in that account, we typically have a small contingency for things that may come up throughout the year. So, the 16,000, the almost 17,000 would be a reduction to that contingency. And then, the reduction for the new needs of 100,000. So, with the centennial year upon us, the city wanted to put some money aside for planning of centennial events based on any input that we received and any planning that was going on. And so, the reduction would just eliminate any, any funding for the centennial events and we would plan events within funding that we already have within departments and just not allow us to do maybe a larger event.
Okay, so are we eliminating 100% the centennial event?
So, there are some centennial plannings that are going on with, with funding that we have. They are not significant and they, and staff was coming up with creative ways to do, to do things. So, the 100,000 would just really eliminate our ability to have a more significant event or events related to the centennial.
Thank you so much Paula. Impact in the city manager's office. If you want to come back. Reduction to operating accounts is 6,195 and total reduction 6,195. I, I spoke to Martha, I believe advertisement and promotions would, would be affected. Mailings and communications to the residents of what's happening as well. But if you want to go ahead and elaborate, I'd appreciate it.
No, I just want to say that it's good to be the city manager because I'm only reducing 48,000 out of my, my budget. But that, that represents another commission aide that we wanted to hire so that we had an aide for each of the five commissioners, the mayor, the vice mayor and the three commissioners. So, we would eliminate or freeze that position. But when we talk about freezing positions, we, we prefer to freeze rather than to cut so we don't lose the headcount in the event that two, three years down the road, we have additional revenue coming into the city, we're able to fill those positions.
Thank you very much, city manager. Thank you very much, city manager. Okay. Okay. Recommendations, budget and finance department officially recommended not to lower the millage rate. There was a resolution passed on July 9th and it was from the budget and audit advisory board, asking us to maintain the millage the same. That resolution passed on July 9th. And I know my appointee to the budget is here as well. Okay. Make your voice heard and email your commissioners, the whole commission, yes. If you want us to lower the millage, I am more than happy. If this is what you guys want, I'm on board. I just wanted to provide the, I wanted to, I wanted you, I wanted to provide the information and the facts of what's going to happen. But if at the end of the day, this is your will, I am more than happy to vote that way. So, if you could go ahead and, these are email addresses. You, you got a package here. What I really don't want to do is reduce services and then get 1,000 emails saying, this is broken, people didn't show up, whatever the case is. Yeah.
If you just give me a couple more seconds. I just wanted to talk about some of the open issues, some of the unknowns. For example, we're currently in negotiations with the Teamsters Union, going back and forth on their contract. That contract really affects roughly 811 folks. About 360 Teamsters and then the 207 general employees and the part-time employees. The other issue is we're currently in negotiations with contracts. We have bids out that we're working with back and forth. So, hopefully that won't be affected by this. The annexation of Little Gables, there's some folks here. First year alone, it's going to be like a 3.1 million deficit for us if that goes through. And as it goes year by year, eventually, we'll be able to go back, break even and then recoup some. But that's still some of the unknowns that are out there. We have the MOU with Miami-Dade County. They want to start charging for police services when they respond to municipalities upon our request. For example, if we have a homicide in the city and we ask for their crime scene and the homicide investigators to come. If this MOU passes, the Gables would be on the hook for their cost of, of coming into the city, their operating costs or salaries and so on. I don't believe that's going to pass. All the police officer, police chiefs in Dade County are against it. But again, another unknown. And as you can tell, we sort of have a tropical depression forming. You never know when storms comes through. We can't, you know, really predict whether we have one, two or three. But what I can tell you is thanks to the work of our budget and finance folks is that we, we do have reserve funds, 25% reserve funds in the bank that we're able to handle at least one major hurricane coming through. If a second one comes through, then we would have to do some creative financing. So, I want you to keep that in mind and just keep that in mind that what happened recently, the cyber attack, you know, we cut back on IT. That's going to reduce our ability to monitor the activity. This last one that came through, we were very lucky. Ramundo, correct me if I'm wrong, we were very lucky when it came to, to that. We only had one program and it wasn't us. It was actually the manufacturer that was hit, affected by it, that affected our operations. That was Infogov was the one that. Okay, so those are again, all the unknowns. And at the end of the day, I guess to look at, what is the, the reduction? The 2% reduction in the millage. How much does that affect your bottom dollar, your pocket at the end of the year? And we've calculated, and please correct me if I'm wrong because I'm not a numbers person. We calculated an average of 106 dollars or so per household per year. So, again, the decision is up to our residents and I'll turn it over back to the commissioner.
Thank you so much for your comments. I want to acknowledge Commissioner Fernandez that he's here. Thank you for your presence. Any of the commissioners or vice mayor have anything to say before I take questions? Menendez? Come on up. Oh, there you go.
We recently agreed to cut garbage fees. And now, we're discussing possibly cutting the millage rate. I think in the presentation, it was discussed that cutting the millage rate, the distribution to the residents would be disproportionate, benefiting some, not benefiting others. Could you explain the difference between the benefit to the residents from the garbage fee? If I'm not mistaken, is equal across the board as opposed to even if we want to equally return some funds from the millage rate cut, by law, I would imagine our hands are tied. Could you explain the difference between the two cuts and how those funds are distributed?
So, let me know if I answer the question. Can you hear me okay? Yes, yeah, okay. So, the, a reduction to the millage, I'll start with that, right? A reduction to the millage is a reduction to a household or to a property based on the taxable property value. And so, that number is going to fluctuate depending on whether you're a homesteaded property or a non-homesteaded property or a commercial property. And so, while the solid waste reduction is a specific number that was reduced to all, I'm going to say, single-family households, although there are maybe some duplexes or multiplexes that are serviced by our, our wonderful solid waste staff. And so, the early payment, and I believe this is what you're referring to, Commissioner Castro's statement earlier in the presentation. The early payment was reduced by $254. And so, 72% of households take advantage of that early payment. And so, 72% of them got the $250 reduction. And that's $250 reduction represents about an 8.3, is, is equivalent to an 8.3% millage reduction for the median homesteaded residents. And so, for those of you who don't speak finance or math, median is the 50% line. So, 50% of our homesteaded properties' value is, I have that number, is 550,000 or so. And so, 50% of our, of our homes, of our homesteaded properties received an equivalent of an 8.3% reduction in millage by reducing that early payment amount. And so, if your value is less than the median value, you actually receive more than an 8% reduction. And that early payment, the regular payment was reduced by $360. And so, as the commissioner stated earlier, that represents an 11.76% or equivalent to 11.76% of a millage reduction to the same median homesteaded taxable value.
But with regards to the garbage fee, it's the same dollar amount relief for every single property that pays a garbage fee. So, it's the same dollar amount across the board.
Yes.
But with the millage rate, some much less, some much more. The garbage fee was, I would say, fairly distributed across the board. Millage rate, like you said, some will pay a relief of a few dollars. Commercial, 30,000 or 13,000. So, it's a very disproportionate relief.
Yes, and then to your, to your other point, we are limited by how we can give reductions to residents. So, we are not allowed to give back money based on your property tax value other than reducing the millage. We are not allowed to directly tie any reduction to taxes or any, any one-time check that we, that would be perceived to be directly tied to your property tax revenue.
Thank you.
Okay, Commissioner Fernandez, would you like to say anything?
I just want to follow up since we're talking.
Oh, I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry.
Garbage fees. The garbage fee itself only applies to single-family homes. But, and it was an item that I, I pushed for last year and I moved for this year as well and suggested the $550 rate. But unfortunately, it doesn't take, take care of the multifamily homes, you know, the duplexes, the condominiums. All those residences, whether you call them single-family homes or multifamily homes, did not get the benefit of the garbage fee reduction, correct?
Yes, that's correct. The solid waste fee is paid by primarily our single-family residential and some duplexes and multiplexes.
But I've been around down, up and down Segovia and up and down where the condominiums are. They have dumpsters and they're all serviced. Every single one of them is serviced by waste management. They did not get a reduction, did they?
No, they would not have gotten any reduction in the solid waste fee. They pay the, the commercial company directly.
Okay.
I'm going to go ahead and I'm going to take cards right now and then we can go ahead and you, hear from someone from Zoom and then come back over here to be fair. The first person that I'm going to hear from is Maria Cruz. Yes, absolutely, right in back of you, it's coming.
I guess I'm trained. Mrs. Maria Cruz, 1447 Miller Road. I think it's, I'm fascinated that we're sitting here talking about everything that we try to, or you can hear me, everything that we forget. I used to pay maybe 100 and some dollars for electric. This month is $500. I guess the city is paying more for electric than they did before. There are so many more things that we forget. But next, my next comment is, when we talk about essential services, we seem to forget a very important essential service. I know police is very important. Everybody knows how much I support the police and the fire. But you know what? If you all put your thinking cap on and remember what happened in New York when sanitation went on strike, that could happen here if we don't have enough people picking up our garbage. And let me tell you, Coral Gables is known for having rats because we have water all around. If you don't believe it, turn your lights off and look at the electric wires and you will see some, some little animals there, okay? So, I say that sanitation is as important as an essential, as anybody, anything else that we can think of. And when I see sanitation being affected, that concerns me. Think about the one day that maybe your garbage was not picked up. Go outside and smell. Go inside and, and decide that if you do not want your garbage picked up twice a week like we do now. This is what you have to consider. When you cut services, you're really affected. I'm sorry, most of us that live in Coral Gables live here because we like the services we get. If we did not like the services, we could be live someplace else. There are plenty of other places we can live in. But we choose to live here because of the services. Now, we keep building up. We keep bringing more people in. Guess what? More services are needed, as the police, as the fire, okay? That costs money, money. And let me tell you the last, that will surprise some of you. When you hear taxable money, taxable price, that means exactly that. For the city of Coral Gables, not for the school board, but for the city of Coral Gables, your taxes are based on the taxable value of your property. If you have homestead exemption, if you're protected by whatever saved on your property, all that stuff that we can use, you do not pay as much. So, for example, because you know I checked before I opened my mouth, I emailed Diana Gomez, our finance director. And I said, Diana, please tell me, how much money am I going to save if my millage goes down 2%? Are you all listening? I will save $28.11. And in exchange for that, I may lose some of the services that I want. It's not worth it.
Thank you, Maria. Now, let's go ahead and take the next person in Zoom, the next resident. Are we ready for that? Okay. And anybody that wants to talk, I am collecting cards. They're in the, in the back of the room. If you have a question, please go ahead and fill it out. Are we having technical difficulties? I'll go to the next person in here. Okay, we'll go to the next person and then the Zoom after this one is Doug Meyer. Meyer, hi. The microphone is coming to you.
Yes, good evening. My name's Doug Meyer. I live at 1101 Cortez Street in Little Gables. You know, it's interesting listening to the presentations tonight. First of all, I wanted to thank the commissioner for, for hosting this town hall and for staff and commissioners for being here. When I, when I see this presentation of the budget and I see the, the things that the city is trying to provide to the community, and then I weigh that against the city's attempt to annex Little Gables, something that many of us do not want to happen. And when you look at the cost of that annexation, and I'm not talking about my predictions, I'm talking about the city's own professional consultant that they hired and paid to do this study, says that it's going to cost 23.5 million dollars over five years to achieve the annexation. And when I look at that and I see your budget and I go, the annexation. And when I look at that and I see your budget, and I go, how in the heck is anybody going to propose an annexation of Little Gables when you can't meet your basic needs that you've got going right now? It's it's, to me, it's ridiculous that you would want to spend money that you do not have. And some people say, well, oh, it's eventually the tax, the the income that will be generated by taxes, annexing Little Gables will offset the cost of providing services. But when you look at the the actual report that was generated, in the second year, the deficit is $483,000. But then in years three, four, and five, that deficit is getting bigger, not smaller. So their own projections are that they're going to lose money by annexing Little Gables. So we, the people that live in Little Gables and oppose this annexation are asking you, make sense with with yourself. Don't don't do something that is just totally crazy and and spend money that you don't have. I think most people would rather see their parks improved. I think they'd like to see arts programs to continue with children. I think they'd like to see better roads, the sidewalks fixed. I think those things are important to the residents. And just leave Little Gables alone. We're happy the way we are. We don't want to be part of Coral Gables. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Doug. The next speaker that we're going to be taking is Sue Korolovsky.
Hi there. Can you hear me?
Yes, I could hear you perfect.
Hi. Well, thank you, Commissioner Castro, for holding this very, very informative meeting. Very truthfully, I have not had time to pay much attention in the past, but this has been very informative. You know, it must be an election year coming up because whenever there's an election year, the ones coming up for reelection always say, let's reduce something like taxes or millage rates. So I suspect that's where this is coming from. It's a good campaign advertising. But regarding the services, and I think Maria Cruz mentioned this, we are experiencing a housing density increase like never before, and therefore more residents are moving here. How can we even contemplate reducing services when we have such an increase in density in our in our city? We can't even handle what we have now. How are we going to handle the increased density is my question. But so I am very much for holding the millage rate as it is. Maria Cruz saving the 20-some dollars and me saving probably $30 is insignificant. But I do applaud the commissioners who did vote for the garbage reduction fee because that's something real that I could see immediately. So I applaud the commissioners for voting that in. But if perchance the millage rate was going to be reduced and services were going to be decreased, how come we're not mentioning things like reserves? Are we still going to be putting a lot of money into the reserves? Why don't we cut that out? Why don't we stop putting all the money that we have into reserves? That's one area that we could be saving rather than cutting staff. Another option, in my opinion, would be to cut out the consultants. I would like to know how much the city spends on consultants. I think we have a very robust staff. We probably need more staff. But how much, how many millions of dollars are we spending on consultants and outside attorneys? I think we have eight attorneys on staff as it is. Why do we have to hire outside attorneys? Our current staff should be able to handle the needs. Lastly, I think the city owns a horse. What are we doing with a horse? I don't know about you, but I think just the boarding of the horse, the and the servicing of that horse probably is costing well above six figures. So these are three areas that if services were going to be reduced, take a look at those first before cutting very essential services. Thank you.
Thank you, Sue. Jose Riera.
Good evening. My name is Jose Riera, 425 Seville Avenue. Per the budget estimate, operating revenues are estimated to increase by $14.3 million. The budget increase states that 9.81 are from property taxes. The proposed reduction of taxes would be $2.6 million. That still gives you an increase of $11.7 million operating revenue, 7.2 from property taxes, and 4.5 from additional sources. You stated, while savings are always welcome, this is you, Commissioner Castro, while they're always welcome, it's crucial to consider what we might lose in exchange for such a nominal amount. And I want to get back to that in a minute. I hear that who will benefit mostly are the wealthy, and it's going to help long-term residents minimally. The reduction in taxes will help new and other residents in the city of Coral Gables. I don't care if it's a small amount, it's going to help them, period. When revenues are estimated to increase, everybody in the city, of course, is going to ask for increased spending in their division. If there's more money available, I'm going to go after it. If the city did not have additional revenues, this would not be an issue. After the proposed reduction, you should still have an increase of $11.7 million. You should not increase the city's future budget on taxpayers by increasing the number of employees based upon that increase of revenues in a single year. And seeing the presentation today, I found something a bit amusing. Police and fire chief just confirmed their budget will not be touched. The presentation says police have $723,038 reduction, and the fire has $82,182 reduction. How do we know all the other numbers in this presentation are not misleading, like the police and the fire numbers?
Let me let me go ahead and correct. Those numbers right there are the needs that were not funded. If you can go ahead and look at the presentation. It states it there. Could you go ahead and verify that I'm correct? Do you have an extra, an extra pamphlet where I can? Right, that's, it wasn't funded. New needs that weren't funded. That's what it says. I'll go back to it. Right on top of those two numbers, it says, new needs not funded before the consideration of the 2% reduction. And then it says police and fire. Do you see that? Right on top of those numbers. Is that a little more clear for you? Well, I'm sorry. No, no, that's perfectly fine. Everybody thinks different ways. That's perfectly fine. I'm sorry that you didn't see it that way. The next person we're going to be talking to is Lynn.
Hi, everybody. First, I wanted to acknowledge and thank you for being a champion of your residents, even though.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Even though you know that I am vehemently against the annexation of Little Gables. To the Coral Gables voters that might not be aware, there is a question on your August ballot asking if you want Coral Gables to annex Little Gables. And the last words of the ballot question say, quote, "and absorbing all associated annexation costs," end quote, which were estimated by the city of Coral Gables to cost $23,594,000 for just the first five years. It's important you know that part of the ballot question. And I have a question. My question about the budget. If annexation was being considered as part of any future budget, of the $23,594,000 that would come from the tax dollars of your residents, which Coral Gables city services would be affected and or reduced?
The same services in a bigger amount, because that would have to come from the general fund. We cannot get a loan for operating expenses. But I know Paula can go ahead and we'll have less money for capital projects, and we'll have to cut services if that is right now, as we're speaking, that's what would happen. Do you want to go ahead and say anything else? The question, if annexation was to happen, where would that money come from?
So I don't have the specific answer, but.
It comes from the general fund.
Right. So the so the funding of the annexation anticipates that we would initially make investments into the area, which is what causes the the cost, the initial cost. And so that would just, it would be something that in the first year, we would have to work into our budget. And so it would come from any surpluses that we have within our existing budget. And then in future years, it would be offset by the property tax revenue. But it would be something that would be funded with these same dollars that we're discussing here today. So as the city administration evaluated the annexation, we did not, we are not, we are not contemplating reducing any of our existing services in order to enhance services in another area. That's not the approach that we anticipate taking.
I think when the commission comes together and we we see, we'll probably have to delay it if we're going to vote for yes, whenever the time is right to go ahead and do this. It's my opinion. I don't know what the will of the commission would be after the ballot question comes back. Okay. And thank you, Lynn. The next person, Nicolas Cabrera.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Nicolas Cabrera. I reside at 45 Antia Avenue, Coral Gables. I'd like to start with a comment. I just thought that came to mind while I was hearing the presentations today and comments about the 2% reduction. Garbage fees, garbage fee cuts are equal because garbage fees are equal. Tax burdens are not. So if you want to complain about people getting more back from a tax cut than others, then you should probably be complaining that they are paying more in taxes to begin with. So my view on this is that opposing the reduction of the millage rate because it affects individuals disproportionately is not an appropriate point to make in this case. That's not how taxes work, folks. My question is, I hear that there is a scheduling conflict for Thursday's special commission meeting, in which the commission will be discussing the millage rate. Since there were scheduling conflicts, I had also heard that there were a few other dates proposed for the meeting to be held, including tomorrow at 9:00 AM. Commissioner, do you know why the scheduling conflicts for Thursday, with the scheduling conflicts for Thursday, why tomorrow or other dates may not have been selected for the meeting?
Okay, so there has to be consensus between the commission. And I think that as far as me, I was held, I was holding this town hall today. So you need to give people at least a day to go ahead and absorb this information. So tomorrow morning, after finishing this at this time, didn't give people to look at the Youtubes and actually reading to it. Now, other commissioners, Vice Mayor, I'm not sure what their answers were. On some of the the days I said yes, I was available. On some, no. Everybody has to be on the same page.
Okay. Well, my second question is, I'm hearing a lot of doom and gloom based on the idea of a 2% tax cut that will remove roughly 1% from next year's budget. What happens if the housing market cools and takes 5% or 10% off the top? Remember, the Great Recession took many home markets down by 50% or more. So a 10% drop is merely a correction compared to that. What happens then? And I wish to hear from you, Commissioner, as our elected official. I don't want to hear from staff on this item.
Yeah, so staff is going to answer that question. But as Paula said.
In that case, it's okay. The question was directed to you.
It was answered already. It was answered, it was answered already by Paula.
No, no, let me, I'm going to read, I'm going to repeat the question.
No, no, the way we budget was answered by Paula. So if we don't have the funds, because there was a 10% reduction, that's how we're not going to be able to fund whatever we need to fund. Thank you for your questions. The next person, I'm going to go ahead and take through Zoom, Enrique Bernal.
Good evening, Commissioner.
Good evening.
This is Enrique Bernal, 718 Valencia Avenue. I have one comment. I have two questions, if I may.
Absolutely.
The first question is, what you have demonstrated tonight is that you don't have any department idiots in charge because the rule of every department is to be able to say that they need more money every year, no matter what. So, you know, we have wasted a lot of time hearing why everything is going to fall apart if they don't get additional monies. Okay? My two questions are the following. Regarding the trash removal, I am one of those people that lives in a condominium, and we pay for our own waste removal. I would like to know what is the additional cost of backdoor trash removal versus putting them on the street? And the second question is, the the question of the, what is it that the city needs to be able to maintain a level of services that, you know, we keep collecting more and more money, and everybody keeps justifying the fact that we need more and more? At what point do we get to the, you know, to the point that we say, like, wait a minute, the revenue is increasing faster. We have invested this incredible amount of money in the enterprise software system, and every department says that as a result of that, they need more money. Those systems are supposed to make us more efficient. I mean, what I see is still our permit system, nothing has improved. All we have is reluctance to accept the reality and asking for more people. Please try to answer those two questions.
Okay. So Hermes, can you, are you, Hermes is outside? When it goes to the waste management, let me see if he could provide some insight.
Hi, Hermes, yes, I'm the political director. So on your first question, for the over six years that I've been in Coral Gables, we have never been asked to calculate what the savings will be.
Well, it's about time that you do.
Well, that will have to be a direction by the city commission, right? I mean, that's a service that the residents want for as long as that's.
Well, half the residents don't get the service.
You know, like I said, that's not a number that I could provide for you.
If you give us a little time, we'll email you so that they can find out information, okay?
I'm sorry.
I said if he gives us a little bit of time, we'll find out. Time, I don't mean like minutes. I mean, probably tomorrow.
We may be able to look at some estimates, but to to do something like that, you're looking at a complete overhaul and overflick, right? It's not.
How much, well, how long does it take? Does it take three years or five years or three, three weeks?
I mean, I, it depends how busy we are with other things. I couldn't tell you right now. But but it's not just as simple as estimating what what the actual, it's not just staffing, right? We need new trucks. Okay, we'll need, it's an entirely new operation. So that's not something that you can just do on the back of a napkin. So, you know, that's something that if the commission will like us.
How many years?
I already said that I don't have the answer to that right now, but we could definitely look into.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. As far as us hiring more employees, we're doing whatever our departments need to be able to function and give you the quality of service that you guys deserve for the amount of taxes that you are paying. Depending per department is whatever need there is. I know right now, we are very, very, very tight budget. So everything they ask for, we don't get.
What is the value of the investment that we made in the software? All the Raymundo funds, are they supposed to save money or just cost more money?
I understand where you're coming from. Raymundo?
There are cost efficiencies when you implement a new digital system. But at the same time, there are also the need of training staff and getting staff up to speed with knowing how to properly operate the new system. So we are in the transition in some of those cases, like the new, for example, the new financial system. So it's way different than the system that we were using for 20 years. So there are a lot of efficiencies that come from implementing the new systems. There are also a There are also a need, a learning corp that needs to also require training staff, and in some cases, hiring staff that will augment the expertise of the team on the new system.
Should we eliminate the people that are not capable of dealing with the news, with the new system?
That would be at the department's discretion. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you very much for your questions. If you have a question, go ahead and fill out a card, and they'll bring it down to me. The next person is Tom Wells.
Hi, I'll try and make this quick. My name is Tom Wells. I live at thirteen ten Coral Way, Coral Gables for over twenty years. I'm here to support the continued millage at five point five nine that we've had since two thousand sixteen. The people who benefit from the proposed two point six million dollar cut are those property owners, many of whom are not residents, who own property with a high appraised value in Coral Gables. An increase in appraised value of homestead properties capped at three percent, the lower three percent or the CPI. Increase in market value of home owned by Coral Gables residents have not significantly increased city revenue. The increase in property taxes funded by purchasers of new property in Coral Gables and non-residential property owners, whose increase is capped at ten percent per Florida law. For longtime residents, the benefit of the tax cut is small. For example, Diane and I purchased our home over twenty years ago. We paid, we paid Coral Gables operating expenses of four thousand seven hundred and nine dollars in two thousand twenty-three. A two percent reduction means we save ninety-four dollars. That's nothing compared to the real winners of this proposed tax cut. The owners of the Plaza paid two million sixty-three thousand three hundred and ninety dollars in Coral Gables operating expenses for five properties in two thousand twenty-three. A two percent tax cut would be a forty-one thousand two hundred and eighteen dollar benefit, four hundred and thirty-eight times my tax cut. The owners of the Plaza also made contributions to one person on the commission, not, not the other four, just one. On January thirteen, on January thirty-first, two thousand twenty-three, they gave two thousand dollars to, to one of our, to the mayor. Their gain of one point six percent of the proposed tax cut is going to this one real estate developer. In addition, the owners of Gable Station, a retail off, retail office and four hundred and ninety-five residential unit development located on two fifty South Dixie Highway, is owned by Houston-based Global Real Estate Trust, this is not in your, your thing, purchased this, purchased their property for three hundred and six, three hundred and eighty-six million in August, two thousand twenty-two. They paid one million four hundred and seventy thousand dollars in Coral Gables operating expenses in two thousand twenty-three. A two percent tax cut would be a twenty-nine thousand four hundred and eight dollars savings to them. And some of these units have not been developed, so they're paid by the Houston-based Real Estate Trust, not current residents, through a triple net lease. Why are we giving this foreign company a tax cut that costs us services in Coral Gables? In addition, the residents of Coral, of the Palace of Coral Gables do not pay property taxes. It's including their fixed monthly rate per their calculation on their website. These residents do not get any benefit from a tax cut. Now, let's consider who pays the, for the two point six million dollar tax cut. I believe it's equally paid by all the residents of Coral Gables because we all suffer if the city has less funds for safety and services. For example, on page eight of the proposed budget adds five firefighters and five, five police officers. I know, we heard today, those officers will not be cut. But if that money is not funded from that, it's funded from something else. On page eleven, there's a shortfall funding of fourteen million dollars for our city hall. Phillips Park is not funded until fiscal year two thousand twenty-five. Also, Commissioner Anderson is a strong advocate, which I appreciate, of fully funding our twenty-five percent reserve fund. This two point six million dollar cut means there's six hundred and fifty thousand dollars less in our reserve fund. And climate change is a real deal, and we're going to be hit with more hurricanes. I'm all in favor of increasing our reserves. And then there's no mention in the budget about pickleball courts that Mayor Lago wants to build, the youth center. I would like our, our, our funds to be, remain the, remain, remain the same, and we get services for it. Personally, I'm happy paying ninety-four dollars of property taxes so the city has additional two point six million dollars revenue. I request the city continue to have the same millage rate that's had since two thousand sixteen, and use the additional two point six million to provide safety and services to the residents, including pickleball and the youth center. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. The next person I'm going to take is David Perez.
Commissioner Castro, good evening. David Perez, representing the Coral Gables firefighters. Thank you for having the town hall meeting.
Absolutely.
Very useful information. I don't want to be Captain Obvious here, but based on what we saw on the first budget workshop, it doesn't look like there will be an agreement on the millage rate reduction. So I want to thank the staff for presenting the information on a possible one percent cut or two percent cut. But having said, if there is no agreement, is it correct in saying that then the rate will go back to the rollback rate, right? And which then at that point, the city is possibly looking at a ten million dollar reduction in budget revenue? If that is the case, has the staff looked at a ten million dollar redu- uh, reduction citywide? And then on top of that, because again, being in public service, in fire rescue, we plan for the worst and pray for the best. But if there is a rollback rate, and then annexation passes as well, because we have elected leaders who are pushing for annexation, now you're looking at an additional twenty-five million dollars in the long run. What would happen to the city at that point in our services?
Yeah, so the first question, the first question was.
Rollback rate.
The rollback rate, the rollback rate, we wouldn't, we would have to reach a consensus. If we get up and we don't vote, which I highly doubt that's going to happen, then that's when the rollback rate would kick in. Then I, go ahead.
David, actually, and correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't actually looked at a ten million dollar hit to our budget, because quite frankly, it's unimaginable what that would do to our services. I mean, if that happens, we'll be cutting, laying off people, we'll, you know, we'll just have to do what we need to do to continue providing as basic services we can to the community. So to answer that question, we haven't even looked at that issue. Now, we'll, we'll start kind of looking at it, but we have, we have not looked at the ten million.
And then, did you have another question after that? I'm sorry.
No, it's just a combination of rollback rate and annexation.
Okay. Yes. You make good points. Thank you, David. Okay. The next person I'm going to be taking is Carlos Estrada.
Yes, thank you. Carlos Estrada, four two four Candia Avenue. I've been a resident in Coral Gables since nineteen ninety-two, so I've been watched a few of these. My point is this, Coral Gables is no different than any other government agency. The more you get, the more you want to spend. In two thousand nineteen, the two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty budget, there was ninety million dollars in property tax revenue. We're talking a hundred and twenty-nine million this year. That's a thirty-nine million dollar increase of forty-three percent over five years. Two years ago, it went up twelve million dollars. This year, it's going up ten million dollars. I think it's time that we try to get a little bit leaner and meaner and see where all these expenditures are going to. Because I personally think that if the property tax revenue would have been a hundred and thirty-nine million instead of a hundred and twenty-nine millions, we would be watching the same slides. Thank you.
Thank you. There's no question. Okay. The next person is Marcos Azar. Is Marcos here? No? No, okay. The next person is Maite Haley. Can we provide her with a microphone, please?
Thank you. So I'm going to talk about something first that I wasn't, that's not in my notes, but I keep hearing about how our property values have increased and how that's creating extra revenue for our city to spend. So why are our property values increasing? Because people want to move here. Our Dade County property appraiser is the one who sets the assessed values for our property. It is not Coral Gables commissioners, Coral Gables staff who sets those. In addition, our millage rate is in the lowest third of the thirty-five municipalities in Dade County, if you're not aware of that. So we are getting top-level services because people want to live here. That's what drives the property prices up. So think, think about that. And then, as I understand here, by law, we need to spend or use the money. We cannot return it to the residents, is what I've heard from, from Mr. Rojas and from Commissioner Castro. But the comments I really wanted to, to make today is that I've had email exchanges with some of the commissioners over the past couple of days, and the arguments against, you know, against keeping our millage rate, to me, are specious, and they are misdirection arguments, and I wanted to address four of those. First of all, I was told very clearly services will not suffer by these commissioners. They clearly will, from what I've seen here today. I know that we're not going to get updates on computers that are going to control viruses and hackers and, you know, Russian oligarchs using our computers to hold the city hostage. We're not going to get our trash pits fixed. Flooding control, tree trimming is not going to happen. Recreation programs are not going to, are going to be affected, and I'm not going to talk about pickleball at all. I'm going to talk about, I'm going to talk about some other activities. My mother, who has dementia, and several residents in the city who have dementia, enjoy a beautiful program at the Adult Activity Center that has needed to be, is, you know, subsidized by the Recreation Department because it's very expensive, but it is a joy to watch these residents enjoy that program. That's going to go away, I'm pretty sure. I, I don't know, I haven't asked Fred, but I just thought of that while I was sitting here listening. Another program that we've got in the Recreation Department, that's an excellent program, is a diversity and inclusion program for our residents who are either cognitively or socially impaired, and it's a highly successful program that gets people out on the street. That's going to be cut, too. It's going to get them, it gets them to plays, it gets them to activities where they're very comfortable, it gets them to see our fireworks in a way that their senses were not overly stimulated. Those types of programs are going to be cut. The second thing I, I was told is that this is a benefit that would be, you know, because of our city, a benefit that would not allow people to buy starter homes in Coral Gables. I don't know about you guys, but Coral Gables was not my starter home, and I don't think it's a place where there's starter homes for most people today. So, you know, a bonus of keeping this millage rate, which I'm advocating for keeping the millage rate, they, they use this argument, and they're protecting potential residents, but not our actual residents here today, okay? All of us will feel the effect of these reductions, but we will have different, you know, the, the benefit to our bottom line will be, will be different. I've been a thirty-five-year owner in the city, and I've used Save Our Homes, the three percent increase, I've also, you know, it's the three percent allowed increase on my homestead property, we have homestead exemption. It's going to mean eighteen dollars and sixty-six cents to my annual budget. I'm so excited, right? But yet, it's going to affect those services that I talked to you guys about. It, it's not a value to me at all, okay? The third thing I'd like to say is about the garbage fees. So that was a very, very welcome reduction. It was a progressive fee cut. The people in our city who were hurting the most were definitely benefiting from that, and I'm very happy that we were able to do that and that our commissioners were able to put that together. But it doesn't benefit our commercial properties, it doesn't benefit some of the condo owners, and so I think this is a way for our commissioners to get money back, some people to get money back into their pockets, into the commercial property owners' pockets, and be able to say to our residents, but yeah, we gave you a tax cut come April, two thousand twenty-five at reelection time. The fourth issue that I've been talked about, and this is my, really my last one, is I keep getting, I keep hearing about salaries for our commissioners. That is a total between salaries, car expenditures, and the annual expense accounts, it's two hundred and forty-five thousand out of a current two hundred and sixty-three million dollar budget. It's not even point oh nine percent of the full budget. It's a misdirection. It's got nothing to do with this millage rate. You may not like how that came about, and you're entitled to, to feel that way, obviously, and that's fine, but it's not, it's, it's not going to break the bank at this point. But this millage rate might, and this absolute cut, if we don't get our commissioners to agree, might break our city. The last thing is that as a fifty-six-year resident, because I grew up in the Gables, you know, we're here to discuss issues and informations as residents, as commissioners, those of you that are here, I thank you for coming. Melissa, I think, Commissioner Castro, excuse me.
That's perfect.
Thank you for putting this together. Thank you for staff who's been here so long today. I, I think that we need to talk about issues. We don't need to talk about personalities. We need to see how we work together, residents and the commission. This is not what our genteel city is about. We expect our incumbents and our newly-elected officials to work together for our residents. Thank you.
I couldn't agree more. Thank you, Maite. The next person I will be taking is Debbie Register, Deborah.
My name's Deborah Register. I live at twelve forty plus Davis Avenue. I am a member and have been appointed to the Budget and Audit Advisory Board. At our last meeting, it was extended for the first time because of this issue, and it was thoroughly discussed with the Finance and the Budget Department. We have gone through the budget, we have seen what capital projects can't be done. We've gone through, and we've looked at all the operating expenses of things that cannot be done. And as a result, the majority, well, all three of us were there, and that was the appointee for Lago, the appointee for Anderson, and the appointee for Commissioner Castro. We all voted, and there was a resolution that we signed and was presented, that the millage rate not be changed. If you cannot listen to your advisory board for the expertise that we have, along with your Finance Department, then why are we a board? We are not needed, okay? And we have five very talented members on that board. So I am here saying, do not adjust the millage rate.
Thank you for your service to the board. Thank you. Okay. The next person is Anna Lamb. She just walked out, okay? The next person is Michael, like, oof, six hundred Biltmore? Michael? No? Okay. William Curtin? If we can pass, there we go. Because of Zoom, I want the Zoom people to be able to hear what you're saying. Thank you.
My name's William Curtin, one two three five Castile Avenue. I appreciate you, Commissioner, for putting this together this evening, letting people share their thoughts. I would be in favor of keeping the millage rate the same. I'm a thirty-four-year resident of Coral Gables. My old Spanish home celebrates a hundred years, so.
Congrats.
Still have the original windows. We, we appreciate the community, and I have great respect for all the department heads that spoke tonight. They clearly have a discipline of their departments. I'm not an auditor, but a great indication from an auditor, there was no rounding of numbers, it was down to the sense, so there's a discipline there, there's an understanding and awareness. And while we do collect a lot more revenue because the property values increase, anybody that has a business knows they've had tremendous pressure from their employees for pay raises, and I don't think the city of Coral Gables is any different. The other aspect is, I think by law, for the finance person, you have to have a balanced budget, with the exception of a pension deficit. Is that correct? Unfunded liability. Unfunded liability.
Yes. So by law, we have to have a balanced budget. The pension deficit is not something that we necessarily budget for. We budget to fund the pension costs that we pay towards pension.
And I'm fairly familiar and know there are many, many municipalities and even state governments that have a fully funded pension plan, meaning they do not make an annual contribution, that the investment of the funds that they've set aside is enough to pay out the beneficiaries. Can you share approximately what the pension unfunded liability is currently? Roughly?
I don't have that information specific, but I can tell you that our unfunded
Isn't it almost 80%?
Our unfunded liability is 70, about 76%. I don't have my glasses. 76% as of the, as of September 30th, our unfunded liability.
Fun, fun, yeah.
Oh, my gosh. I don't have my glasses. I'm sorry.
Yes, it's fun.
Yes. The funded liability is 76%, and the unfunded is 20, just under 24%.
And it's, the 24% represents what dollars?
I don't, I don't have that figure with me at the moment.
So the point I wanted to make, and I have another add-on to it, is if we really do have surplus funds floating through the system because of appreciating real estate, why not apply, and I know you do apply additional funds to try and pay down that current unfunded liability, but why not amp that up and increase it if there's extra money on the table? The second question that, that I understand is that for catastrophic reserves, the standard is 25% of your annual budget. So that's a great rule, and I think it, it makes the auditors and the bond folks content, which is great. Changing the millage rate and having it bounce up and down is not a good thing when you go to borrow money. So again, it's another reason to try and keep the millage rate the same. But the point I wanted to make is, again, if we have extra money, why not increase that reserve beyond 25% to take into account what's sort of called a once-in-a-century catastrophic event? We see it happen all over the United States now. I can tell you, insurance companies are pulling out because they, it's uninsurable. And, you know, that's going to fall on us. It's not going to be citizens' insurance. So, you know, if there's extra money, why not buy down the pension plan deficit or liability and/or fund the reserves to a higher level than sort of what is the standard? And again, I think you folks do a terrific job. Every department, I thought, demonstrated great discipline in, in controlling their costs, being able to articulate sort of what it is. And lastly, you know, putting a lot of numbers up there that were to the dollar. Nothing was rounded to 50,000. Shows me a great discipline that you folks are watching the dollars like you should.
Thank you. So as far as making an extra contribution to the pension, we do do that. And at, at the end of the budget, we see what monies are left. And then, I know last year, we made a $9 million extra contribution to the pension. Correct me if I'm wrong, or is it a little more?
So, so just a couple of things. So we don't have, I think the conversation here is, we don't have a surplus of funds. So all the revenue that we receive, we budget for in expenses. And to somebody else's point earlier, what we've done in the, in the most recent years is when we have experienced a significant increase in property values, we have, we have funded operating expenses in a prudent manner. And so we have not built up our operating budget, you know, in these years that we've seen double-digit increases in property values, we haven't added a significant amount of positions to just spend that money. What we have done is we've still continued to budget in a prudent manner and then put the funding towards capital projects. Because the majority of capital projects are one-time items. And so if we do have a downturn in the economy, we can more easily absorb a downturn because we've relied on those fundings for capital, not necessarily for operating. So we don't have necessarily a surplus that we don't know what to do with. But to Commissioner Castro's point, we, what we've done with our pension plan is that we've committed, the commission has committed to fund an extra payment to our pension, to our pension liability, which has then brought down our required payment into the pension. And then for the reserves, you're correct, we have a, a resolution which requires that the city fund a 25% reserve at the end of each year. And so that reserve has, is funded at the end of the fiscal year. It's not something that we budget for, but with surpluses that are available for us to use, any unspent surpluses, we then fund that 25% reserve requirement each year to ensure that we have those funds available in the case of an emergency or something that we would need to tap into. I think that answers.
Thank you for your answer and thank you for your question. The next person is Jonah Colder. Coder? Jonah? 440 Sevillia? No? Okay. And, and then the last person would be Laureano Cancio. Yes. It's coming right in back of you.
So this is the encore. How about the encore performance here?
We leave the best for last.
Hopefully, hopefully. Good evening. I'll try to be brief. I want to make a statement about the Little Gables and also about the 2% issue, and then ask you a question. So I'll be brief. I'll run along here. Regarding Little Gables, I mean, I, I don't think people have actually explored all the options here. I, I don't know. I've been reading it in the paper. And I say, these people are not really addressing the issues. One, the first issue, which is common sense, would be that there are a lot of people out there who have already purchased properties in Little Gables and are just waiting to be annexed. And then they're going to go and reconstruct all those houses and make a lot of money because they bought a long time ago. And so they're coming to all the meetings and say, annex Little Gables. Well, I grew up in Little Gables before I moved to Gables, 20, to Coral Gables proper about 24 years ago. I know the area quite well. They're small houses. But number one is, there are a lot of people with special interests. And they want to make sure they make a killing. So keep that in the back of your mind before you decide anything, because usually people try to convince you of something because they got something to gain. The number two issue is the fact that, actually, annexing Little Gable is going to reduce the value of every person in Coral Gables. They're going to reduce the value of their homes. Do you realize that? Because right now, you have lots of homes in Coral Gables who are in the millions of dollars. The midpoint is about $2 million or something like that. There are very few low-cost homes. The smallest, the smallest house you can get would be a million dollars. So what will happen is, all of Little Gables, which are small little houses, would be reconstructed and will compete head-to-head with your house. The great, the more houses that are on the market, the lower the value. So if your house now is worth a million dollars, a million and a half, you better start planning for that house to go down in value right away. And who's going to make the profit? The people who build those houses, the, the investors from outside, which by the way, have purchased a lot of rental income in, 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 in a lot of properties throughout the United States. Big corporations have owned tremendous percentages of, of housing. Yeah, that's for rent. So many of those houses might become rental units. That's the kind of new citizen that we will incorporate into our society. Is that what you want? Well, think about it. And the number three reason is, what will happen to our schools? Have, do you realize that right now, there is no place for people to send their kids to school in Coral Gables? They're sending them outside the city. Why? Because the schools are full. And, and you find all these people, everybody in Coral Gables is going, is paying $25,000, $35,000 to get a school for their kids. And they're fighting now with the people who are coming from out of state, who are invading, like they used to invade California, now they're coming over here. And that's what's going to happen. There are not going to be any schools available for all those people, including your children and your grandchildren. Why don't we, why hasn't the board started to work on that issue? The issue is Kiviskane. Kiviskane has addressed this issue. They have their own elementary school. They have their own middle school. They went to the school board and they said, we want a school that is going to, you know, be available to all our kids here. And so we have Gables. Gables is a good school. My kids went to Gables and they did very well. They went to, they went to the Ivy Leagues, both of them. But unfortunately, the year after my kid left, some guy got murdered at the school. It is not a safe school. I mean, we can believe whatever we want, but we have lots of people coming from outside of Coral Gables that are coming in. We, Coral Gables has always stood for the best. And we always had Coral Gables was the best school that you could go to. It's not anymore. I don't care what the school board tells you. They want to rake it triple A or whatever they want to do. It's not the case. So if you, Little Gables would be, would come into it and it would be treated like part of Coral Gables. And the few slots we have in the school system will be divided among them also. So it'd be even less housing. The same thing with construction of all these big buildings. You're bringing in people and they're going to go fight for those housing units. I mean, for the spots in the school system. So that's, that's regarding Little Gables. Regarding the 2% issue, you know, it reminds me of what is really going on in America. In America, what's been going on, we basically, I don't know, 20 years ago, I didn't know what a billionaire was. Nowadays, you got a lot of billionaires, a lot of billionaires. And pretty soon, they're saying there's going to be a trillion, trillionaire. What's really happening is, those very rich investors have gone to the corporations and said, we're going to appoint a president who's, who's going to make sure that the corporation is there for the sole purpose of increasing our profits from this, and this corporation. And so what they do is they get somebody, pay them a lot of money, and he better do it. Otherwise, they fire him. He goes in there and he maximizes profit. At the, if somebody leaves, they don't replace that person. They split the work. They make people work harder and harder and harder. And, and, and the money goes always to the corporation. Well, this is what's happening with this 2% thing, this 2% issue. What is really, what's really happening is, the city of Coral Gables exists to increase their profits from their investments in our community. No, the city of Coral Gables doesn't exist for that purpose. And, and just because you buy a house in Coral Gables as an investment, doesn't mean you're a stockholder in Coral Gables. You're just a citizen like everybody else. And your boats don't increase because you have 10 houses in Coral Gables. No, that's not what happens. You're just one citizen, even though you have 10 houses. We, we have to take actions to support the people who make this a great community. We have to do that. Because normally what happens is that who, you know, I live, I live at 1250 Bird Road. I've been living there for 24 years. Round the corner is the Historical District. And I run through the area every day. I run three miles. I go everywhere. I even go by the mayor's house every day. I never see him. I think he's hiding from me. I don't know. Don't tell him that. I'll tell him in person. But anyway, the fact is that you, you, traveling, I know everybody, because I've been doing it for 20 something years. I know who lives in every house. And half the houses, nobody lives there. They're all investments. Everybody in Coral Gables, there are lots and lots of homes in this community who are purchased and never, nobody ever lives in them. They're investment properties. And those people are the ones that are pushing for this thing. They give me back money because I bought that house as an investment. It wasn't for, because I love the city, which I do. I think a lot of people here do. And that's why you're here. Otherwise, you wouldn't be here. But that's now where they're here. So I, I, I think that we have to support the people that are coming to us saying, A, I'm here. I support our cultural institutions. I, I try to make this a livable city. I am not an investor. I am not an absentee landlord who comes here and become rich overnight. If you want to become rich overnight, well, that's your business. If, if the market race goes down and all of a sudden, you lose all your money, well, that's what happens to people who want to be rich overnight. You could lose all your money. So that's the risk you take. Don't blame me for taking the risk. You took the risk. You took the risk. It's your, your problem. All right. Having, so I'm, obviously, I'm against the idea of the 2% issue. The, I think that the money should be returned, basically, to the people who, well, first of all, if you think about it, if you think about it, when we, we have passed, everybody in, in this community is very conscious about expenditure funds. They're very conscious about expenditure funds. So anything that's in the budget, and by the way, I've worked in, I worked in nonprofit at Columbia University. I worked at New York Botanical Garden. I worked at Borden's, which is a Fortune 500 company. I worked for a lot of companies. Plus, I've been a lawyer for 40 years. So I'm not making up stuff. I mean, I'm, I'm telling you how it is. But, but when something is in the budget, because there was a need for it, the people didn't put it in the budget because they had nothing else better to do. And you come around and you say, I'm going to cut 2% of the budget. I'm going to cut 5%. Oh, my God, you know what you're doing? Like, like it was demonstrated here, clearly. That's what happens. I mean, our community falls apart. We, we go after each other. People get laid off for no good reason. Because Coral Gables, the only reason you have layoffs or massive cuts is when you don't have any money, when the city is bankrupt. But the city is not bankrupt. There's no need for any of this stuff. So that goes to the last question that I wanted to ask you. I don't think that people really understand what we're facing. My understanding, and I don't really understand it myself, my understanding is that if two commissioners, two commissioners vote against, insist, I shouldn't say vote, if two commissioners insist that there should be a reduction of 2%, you have to go through. Otherwise, there's some sort of an increase automatically comes into place, and you have to all of a sudden cut 10% of the budget. So in a sense, even though you're against this, you might be hijacked. You might be forced to vote against this because there's a threat that the taxes are going to go up 10%. I don't think that's been explained.
Yes. Unfortunately, what you're saying is true. I feel like I'm stuck in a lose-lose situation. I would just advise that whatever your opinion is, email your elected officials. Maybe they would see your point of view as well. And yes, it's a lose-lose situation at this point.
They can come to you in a smoke-filled room and say, look, if you don't give us this 2%, you're going to have to increase it by 10%.
If you don't give me this 2%, then it's 3%, then it's 3%. It would be 3 point something million. And if we don't get up and we, let's say, we're not voting on this, goodbye. Let's take a recess. Then it'll be 10, it'll be 10 million. I'm pretty sure that the elected officials that we have will not let that happen.
But, but how many of them?
I will lock the doors for that not to happen.
Five? Do you need four out of five to be against this?
We need four out of five. To leave the millage the same, we need four out of five for the 2%. And we could do a majority vote of three, three out of five for a three, I think, 3.247 million dollars. Reduction. So it's either 2 million or even more.
So you know, if the taxes go up, you know, it's going to go for the two people who vote against it, right? Two or three people. Whoever votes against it, you know, because if you get more than one, we're going to get a 10%, a 3%, a 4%. All of this is going to go, going to go out the window and nobody cares. Is that, am I getting that right?
You're getting it right.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. We have one last person before we wrap up. Guys, remember, there's sandwiches in the back and everything. If you want to stay here a couple of minutes more and mingle and network, please, please do so. Meet your, meet your neighbors. The next person is Felix Pardo.
One of the disturbing things that I found out recently is that, speaking of assets and speaking of services that the city has, is that the city also has to have enough money when first you, you adopt the millage rate, and then you start doing the real work, which is accommodating the budget. It's very, very disturbing that the Coral Gables Museum is almost defunct financially. We're talking about something that was supposed to, supposedly going to be self-contained. Recently, they sold off TDRs, the last remaining TDRs, I think, just to be able to keep it afloat to do repairs. Incredibly, what most people don't understand is that the museum will have to have help, direct help, very big help from the city. In other words, the commission is going to have to provide that because they don't sell enough tickets like they do over at the theater. But there's a real problem here. So when you have absolutely no money to be able then to help them out, you're going to lock those doors and just let it go to waste. I am amazed that most people don't realize I am amazed that most people don't realize, as educated as they are here, that the 5.559 millage rate has existed in the same, till the last hundredth of a digit since 2016. This proposal has to be approved at the four-fifths vote. To be clear, a 2% reduction, any reduction, needs a four-fifths vote. The rollback rate, which is the nuclear option, goes back where we, instead of having the $10 million windfall, that means that we lose those $10 million, which would be a gigantic disaster. So going back to a reduction of 2%, pulling that out of the hat, then you have the simple majority according to the state statute 200.065, where that rate is 5.4119, and that would only require a simple majority of 3 to 2, and then that would still have a loss of $3.2 million. I think that, at the end of the day, the accountability of the loss of services will be for those that don't vote to keep this millage rate the way it is. Keep in mind, you're going to have surprises. I am still surprised that I went to Venetian Pool, which I had not gone to in many years, and all of a sudden, they had it taped off like if it was a crime scene, because some of the pools were not operating because they didn't have enough money to do that. And that is what you're going to see more and more of.
And that's without a 2% reduction.
And that is correct. So with a deduction like, or a reduction like this of 2%, which is $2.6 million compared to a simple majority of 3.2 million, that's a $600,000 difference. The lack of services is going to still be significant, but I think people are going to be held accountable for it.
Thank you. So one last time, I'm going to ask everybody to, whatever your opinion is, to please go ahead and reach out to your elected officials, let them know what is that you want us to do.
Can I, can I provide a point of clarification? Just a point of clarification on the sale of the TDRs. So the, the funding that was received from the sale of the TDRs, those funds are not funds that can be used towards operating expenses. When the commission approved the, the sale, the availability of selling TDRs for some of our historic properties, it was very specific that those funds have to be used for the restoration of historic facilities. And so those funds have been set aside and then later allocated towards projects that would be used towards certain historic facilities in our city. So just to be clear, those funds wouldn't be something that would be used towards any operating, not within our budget or within the operating budget of the museum. So just.
Yeah. I want to stress one thing. This cut is not just a cut for this year. This cut is for every single reoccurring year, which, that's the biggest impact, because if you tell me not, fine, 2%, I think we could probably manage. But the biggest hurt would be trying to manage that 2% year after year after year. I know the city manager wanted to say something. Mr. Rojas?
No.
No, no. Once again, I want to, oh, once again, I want to thank everyone that was here, all staff, residents, Christopher Challenger, David Perez from the union, Commissioner Fernandez, Vice Mayor Anderson, Commissioner Menendez, and everybody else that stayed here till this late. This is a very important matter. Please go ahead and have some more snacks. Thank you.